We are going to start with the indication. And well, I'm going to go ahead and take care of that because Commissioner Bettis will be me joining us in just a bit. So if we can stand for the invocation. Heavenly Father, we invite you to preside over this meeting. May we each remember that we are public servants called upon you to serve our community. Guide us to be respectful of one another, even when we have differences of opinion. Give us unity of spirit. Help us to stick to the agenda and not get distracted with discussions that are pertinent to our objectives. Help us to clearly understand the objectives and expectations of this meeting and stay focused on those things. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Now, the pledge.
The pledge is to provide the United States and America to the people who wish to stand one nation under one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor, if we stay on topic, it will be a miracle.
All right. We can only pray. At this time, I'll ask the attorney to read the conflict of interest, please.
Yes, Mayor. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a council member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest disclosed at this time?
Yes, item 16, I guess, for me.
None.
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 And then for me, thank you. And Commissioner, that was item 16, correct? I think you. All right, we are going to start with our presentations of proclamation and recognition awards. The first one that we have, can I, can you grab that for me, Amanda? Yes. Our first proclamation is for Elder Abuse Awareness Month, and I'm going to ask for Abigail Rivera, Monica Figueroa, Frank Gonzalez, Lydia Ponce, Marina Quezada, and Joe Cruz, if you could be, stand to be recognized right here in front of the podium. These wonderful folks are from the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. And today, we'd like to present this proclamation. Whereas people who are elderly or have disabilities that have contributed to the general welfare of this state and the Harlingen community by helping to preserve the customs, convictions, and traditions of many people from diverse backgrounds. And whereas these residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives. And whereas abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country in 2022. One hundred and nineteen thousand four hundred and forty-eight completed cases of elder abuse and who find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. And whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods and suburbia. And many of the cases investigated by the Adult Protective Services in Texas involve self-neglect, and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. So therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, Texas, in recognition therefore, proclaim the month of June 2023 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And thank you so much for all that you do. It is a tremendous asset, you know, what you do is, I mean, everyone has, I think, in this commission elderly parents that we worry about, and we are fortunate to be able to be in their lives, but we know there are so many elders that don't have that family support to be able to rely on. So the work that you do is, you know, you have a heart of gold, and we appreciate you so much. If the commission can join me, I don't know if you wanted to say a few words, welcome to.
Any suspected of abuse neglect or exploitation can be contacted or reported at 1-800-252-5400. There's also the TX Abuse Hotline that is open 24 hours a day. I mean, it is a website. But, you know, we also want to thank our city officials, our local PD, you know, and local judges that also assist us in keeping our clients safe, whether, you know, they intervene as well and assist in any legal actions. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If you can join us up here for a quick photo.
You've got to be lucky, I'm hoping my wife. I like the way she's so sweet. Hey, so much. Just give me such a good time. Can you still be up there? It's so sweet.
You want to?
That's what I did. You want to come down? Right. I'm going to have a little bit of you come. There you go. There you go. One, two, three, one, one, two. Thank you. Good job. Thank you. All righty, moving right along.
Now, it is my great honor to recognize two of Harlengens. I call them superhuman folks. If they are in the lobby, I hope they're in the back. Okay, so June, if you can make your way up here to the podium. And Apo, I'm not going to even try the whole name.
Apo, you have to tell us how to pronounce your name properly.
Yes, please tell us.
My full name is Abdurrahman Ipekishya.
Apo's great. So these amazing gentlemen that we have before you, before the commission, you know, this is a recognition that I think has, it's, I was very surprised that it hadn't come sooner because the two of you really truly are the epitome of health and wellness and have done so much for our community. And you just, you know, when I think that you have done, like, all there is to do, you go and do more. And that's what this here is about. These two folks have qualified in the Ironman Waco, Texas two-step, a half Ironman and full Ironman, over a two-day weekend, and for winning the state championship, one of two athletes from Harlingen, so the two athletes from Harlingen, Texas, and the Rio Grande Valley to qualify for the championship and participate in the Ironman World Championship in Nice, France, on September 10th, 2023. That is incredible, and we are so proud that you are going to make Harlingen proud. And I know that you're training very hard and you're going to do amazing, but just to have this opportunity and to becoming from South Texas, I think this is an incredible win for our entire region. And I can't thank you enough for making Harlingen proud and going out there and doing all the work that it takes to do this. And so I'm incredibly honored to present these award recognitions to the both of you. But before I do, I don't know if you want to share with the folks what an Ironman is, I know, but for those that are maybe listening at home.
Okay, Apo and I are usually good with running, biking, and swimming, but not public speaking.
I know.
And that's why, I think that's why we do what we do. But a full Ironman distance is basically your 2.4-mile swim, and then 112-mile bike, and the 26.2 marathon run. Basically, I mean, we do it just because, I mean, we love it, but more than that, it's basically a time of slowing down with life being too fast. There's a lot of time out there, being able to meditate, enjoying the trail and everything. And we're both happy that we're able to represent Harlingen. And since, basically, we, Apo's from Turkey, I'm originally from the Philippines, we both decide, you know what, we want to build our family, which is, my wife is here, and Apo's wife. We want to grow our family here in Harlingen, so we choose Harlingen, and we're happy to represent Harlingen. And hopefully, it raises the expectation and benchmark of, when I first came in, I mean, I think the challenge that I had a hard time accepting was that the mindset of nothing comes big from the valley. So I think that was the push and the drive that I have from what we do, that, you know what, we want to raise the expectation, we want to raise the benchmark of what is expected in the valley or in Harlingen. That's it. Thank you, Mayor.
It's amazing. And I'll just have to say, since you pointed it out, you know, immigrants do amazing things too, and we are better for it, and being inclusive, and making sure that we're a community that's accepting, because y'all are doing amazing things. And now you're part of Harlingen, you have been for such a long time, and, you know, we can all just aspire, or maybe vicariously be there with you, but I know that I could never do it, so, you know, it's just, it's truly amazing. So I'm honored to present these recognition. If the commission can join me, and would you like to join us, Dave?
Okay, but we're not running to you.
I bet you I can beat you to the front.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Keep on going.
Thank you so much. Yes. You're holding your port down.
Thank you all so much.
I just got back. Literally.
So Commissioner Bettis has now joined us. Now, we have a quorum. We always had a quorum, ladies and gentlemen, but I do want to remind everyone that you can fly to Cancun straight from the City of Harlingen on Sun Country Valley International Airport, the best airport in the Rio Grande Valley, and it's a direct flight, and you can come right in, in your beautiful Hawaiian shirt, and attend the meeting. So book your flights today. All right, moving right along to citizen communication. Amanda, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, Mayor, we have one, Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket Drive, and the topic is integrity and training.
Wonderful.
Good afternoon, commissioners, mayor. Raymond Reyes, 706 Nantucket. So as we can see, there's a lot of good things coming from Harlingen, representing, I know, in my travels throughout this interesting planet, I would always represent Harlingen and San Antonio, because I'm born in San Antonio, but most of my life here in Harlingen. So I picked those two subjects. Integrity, I think, is very important. It's always important to remember why we do the things we do, for elected officials, why they were elected, for the things, I'm not going to say promised, but the things that they set forth to get where they're at, always trying to do the right things, the positive things, for the citizens of Harlingen and the areas that they represent. It's always a key thing, no matter where you're at. I think we're still going in the right direction, but I think also, on the same token, for the staff within the city, training is very important, and the resources that the staff needs, no matter what department it may be, police, fire, Public Works, and staff in general, need to have access to all the tools required in training, more importantly, because we want to ensure that everybody's safe and everybody's able to go home at the end of the evening, no matter what job or role they may play. I think citizens should take a part and speak up if they notice something, either by sending emails or phone calls to the representatives of their particular areas, to the representatives, and also, don't be afraid to disappoint some of the individuals, in my opinion, that I have seen over the years, and we've been here since '76, that try to impress or, you know, put their will forward if it may not benefit the whole community as a whole and stuff. We always got to keep in mind what's best for the citizens. And, you know, not everybody wins all the time, but as long as we get the best outcome at the end, that's the most important thing. I mean, I've lost too, you know, I don't win every battle, but I always make my voice known, and more so for the ones who reach out to me, because for whatever reason, either they're shy or they're scared of, you know, what's going to happen if they do say something. Trust me, I've paid the price, I'm still here. You know, I've lost personally, I've lost financially, but I just keep going, and there's nothing that's going to stop me, and with God's grace, I'm going to keep on going, and I instill those values in my kids and now my grandkids. So I think if we always keep that in mind, to do the right thing for the right reasons, we'll be okay. And if not, let's not be surprised if something happens, and at the end, there's some type of, you know, exposed, because we have to be responsible for our actions, no matter what. We're all adults. And that's basically, I'm going to wrap it up. They just dropped off my youngest addition, grandson, to my house when I was coming over here, so I'm going to enjoy some grandpa time. Thank you very much for your time, and y'all have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Moving on to item two, approval of minutes, the regular minutes of April 19, 2023. Do we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. Item three is the consent agenda. Do we need to take anything out of the consent agenda, gentlemen? Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
So move.
Day through E. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. On to new business, item four, the presentation by the Texas Heritage Independent Celebration Association. This item was requested by Mayor Protem Rini Bettis and Commissioner Frank Morales. If you would, please approach the mic.
Good afternoon. My name is Alessandro Munoz, and, well, Madam Mayor, commissioners, staff, and citizens of Harlingen, we are here as a organization to seek to partner with the City of Harlingen. Let me give you a little bit of background about who we are and what our mission statement is, okay? We are, we were founded in 2007, and we are the Texas Heritage Independent Celebration Association, and it's an organization dedicated to preserving and promoting the history of Texas, from the natives who first settled here to the numerous flags that have flown over the great state of Texas. THICA endeavors to retell these stories and honor the memory of those who came before us, shaping the Texas we enjoy today. Our mission statement is as follows. The mission of the Texas Heritage Independent Celebration Association is to educate and celebrate Texas culture and to encourage participation by promoting the history of our state through symposiums and community events that recreate this area's rich and colorful history. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, and we are here hoping to partner with the City of Harlingen to continue growing our events and make it a benefit for our community that we serve. And we're showing a short video here about events that we've done in the past, gives a little bit of background about who we are, and then we'll be here available for any questions you might have.
Bless you.
[Music]
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 Those who came before us shaping the Texas we enjoy today. Our mission statement is as follows. The mission of the Texas Heritage Independent Celebration Association is to educate and celebrate Texas culture and to encourage participation by promoting the history of our state through symposiums and community events that recreate this area's rich and colorful history. We are a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, and we are here hoping to partner with the City of Harlingen to continue growing our events and make it a benefit for our community that we serve. And we're showing a short video here about events that we've done in the past. Give you a little bit of background about who we are. And then we'll be here available for any questions you might have. Ready for any questions you might have for us?
Yeah, I just want to say I was at the first one as a vendor in 2007. And I watched them all grow and truly become professionals at this. And you know, your slide mentioned hundreds of people, I think, in Harlingen. We could turn this into big time with thousands of people. And just not for Harlingen San Benito area, but for the entire valley and Texans everywhere who have an interest in our independence as a state. Really, you guys do a bang up job, and I thank you so much.
Well, thank you. That's why we're here in Harlingen. We want to grow the event. We have a series of educational symposiums where we give guest speakers that provide details about our history. Then we have, of course, the battle reenactments. And we've also partnered up with the school district to have kind of field day events where they can come also and visit our reenactments, our camps, where we have the period costume events, and they can visit also as well. So we're here to promote education and make it easy for people to participate and learn from it also as well. And often, part of our history is never told is that Tejano history, which is not included in Texas history. So we have a pretty good mission to just celebrate our history, our rich cultural history. So thank you for your kind words. And yeah, we're here to grow this event and make it a bigger event for all the community to benefit from. We're the only organization in South Texas that does reenactments of the Texas Revolution and promote history this way. So we're excited to approach the city of Harlingen to partner with us, and we're ready to do the work.
I think this would be a great thing. I agree with Mike. As a history teacher myself, I mean, this is giving the kids a firsthand experience or, you know, of how things happen. You're bringing it to life. And I can't think of a better way to actually reach the kids, especially with a topic as important as Texas history. So I commend you for what you guys are doing. The only thing I was, I know I've spoken to you before, and you said there would be an opportunity for us on the commission to participate and get dressed up, correct?
We're looking for volunteers. And we'll provide the uniforms. If you want to participate, we'd be glad to have you onboard. So everybody, everybody again?
So I'll nominate Commissioner Betis.
The other men will have to grow beards then.
So we'll be fine.
We truly appreciate you taking the time to come out here and present in front of the commission. I think we, you know, we are all excited about the potential of partnering with you. I know that I was talking to some residents from Harlingen. We do a coffee with the mayor, and we were talking about this specifically and bringing back more events to celebrate, not just acknowledge, but also celebrate, you know, how we got here, right? And providing a different perspective of history and not just what you get in the history books, even though I know our history teachers do a great job. But there's value in speaking with folks that have lived it, gone through it, and have been part of those platicas, right? Of retelling those stories. And so it's something that I am passionate about, and I hope that we can work together so that way we can bring this, like Mike says, not just to our community, but to our region. It's needed, and I think Harlingen is going to give you that platform to be able to bring people together to learn more and to celebrate and to continue to spread the message, and so it doesn't get lost. So does anybody else have any questions?
Do we, we have like prospective dates already, Gabe?
We have a couple of guests for you also, where we like to address you, but well.
Sure, and maybe what we can do, Calista, we can get a photo with, since you guys got dressed up, now you're gonna have to take a picture with us. So if the commission can join me in that.
Can you also reach out to me later so we can coordinate how we're gonna make this happen?
That's the great.
Dress, oh, thank you.
This is awesome.
Two excel, I don't know.
This is my two. Awesome, great. I know, I think it's running south. I know I have some artists that make it.
Yeah, you start texting sort of 12:30, then we're gonna know who, right?
There we go. Okay, ready? One, two, three, one more, one, two, three. Got it. Okay, wait a few more. One, two, three. Okay. Thank you. So you get dressed?
Okay, item six, consideration and possible action to accept the lowest bid from Peacock General Contractor and authorize removing the adaptive field and supportive components from the proposal and award the contract for the Lancy Hill Destination Park Phase II Construction under bid number 2023-12 and authorize the city manager to execute the contract. Javier?
As mayor, city commission, for the record, my name is Javier Mendez, Park Director for the City of Harlingen. This agenda item, we received two bids in response to bid number 2023-12. The lowest bid was from Peacock Construction. For the original bid was in the amount of $2,954,000. That included the adaptive field and the lighted trail behind Casa Amistad. And so we went to the 4B Board, or Community Improvement Board, to request additional funds. And the board had recommended to postpone or suspend the construction of the adaptive field and just to fund the trail. So we went back to Peacock Construction, wanted to ask him if he was still interested in doing the work for us, if we just got a quote or pricing for the trail. And so what he did was he eliminated everything that, all this cost for the adaptive field, and he came back with a cost of $1.2 million and $73. And so that's our request to you all this evening is to award the bid to Peacock and to accept it and award it for $1.2 million.
The 4B didn't fund the adaptive ball field because they consider a request to complete the renovations of the golf course. And so they added $2 million to the original budget for the golf course. That's why they didn't do this.
So why didn't we, since we took a lot out of the, you know, from the original proposal, we didn't go out for like another bid since it was, since it got a lot smaller?
No, we reached out to the purchase department and asked them if we had to do that. And she recommended that we didn't, but we had to come to the city commission to authorize that to remove the adaptive field and just fund the trail.
Why did they recommend that we don't go out again for another bid?
I guess maybe just timing, you know, we went out, we went out for a bid the first time. We only got two. And so.
Commissioner, we could actually do that. This is gonna be just a paving project going forward because the adaptive ball field is out. So we could actually just reject the bid and go out just for that portion of it to see if we might get a lower bid.
I think that would be best just to go out for other bids.
That certainly is an option.
What kind of, how long would that take or what?
Minimum 30 days. But we work around the events that we have scheduled. So there's gonna be a few held at the park. So we, there's gonna be a few events held at the park so we can work around the dates that we have. Or like the Freedom Fest and even Real Fest will be held probably during a time that it would have been in construction. So we can work with the contractor to try to figure that out and work that out.
I mean, because I'm just thinking that there are options there to save a little bit of money. Maybe, I'm gonna say we will save money, but if there's an option that where we can save a little bit more money by going out for more bids, because right now you said you just went to basically two, right?
Right.
Because those are the only ones with the original. I think since the scale of the projects is a lot smaller, we might actually have more bids. And, you know, when there's more competition, there might be, you know, cheaper price.
Mark, at what point do we have to go up? Because I agree with Commissioner Betis. I've always believed that, or been under the assumption that once you start changing a bid pretty substantially, then you have to go out for a rebid. Or am I incorrect?
I know, that's correct. I mean, if we're gonna change the essential terms of the bid, then we need to rebid.
And essentially that gives people the fair chance.
Yeah.
Otherwise. That's essentially what we've done here, right? We took out a massive chunk of it, so.
Right.
We're gonna do that. That's certainly not a problem. We would have to just reject the bids and go out. Go out for new bids, just for the, just for.
Just for the trail.
Just for the trail.
Yeah.
All right. So do we have a motion to do that?
Yeah, make a motion to reject all bids so we can go out for a RFQ, I guess, for the smaller scale?
Yeah, we'd go out for an invitation to bid for this.
My second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Carries, thank you. Item six, consideration and possible action to award the bid to Montando Trailers in response to bid number 2023-13 for the purchase of a mobile ADA restroom trailer. Javier?
As mayor, city commission, again, for the record, my name is Javier Mendez, Parks Rec Director. The information that you have in the backup, the original backup, is not what we, what we're recommending. I had added, I dropped off some backup information before you. And so the original proposal, so Montando Trailers was the only vendor that met the qualifications originally. But what we were looking for is a trailer that had, that was more, that didn't, it wasn't open just where you walk in, and then there are several stalls inside. It was a little bit more, kind of intimate, more personal, right? So each stall will only have one restroom, commode, and one fixture, similar to what we have right now. And so, so what you have before you is a modified floor plan of what he's recommending. It meets all the criteria that we originally went out for in the bid, and it's less expensive. So the delivery, the construction and the delivery is $97,934. The original was $98,000 plus $4,800 for delivery. So we get the four stalls plus the ADA, one that's individual. Staff is recommending to award it to Montando for this unit here.
The one thing I was wondering if these bathrooms are gonna have is baby changing stations in both the men's and women's bathroom?
They're all, they're all unisex.
Oh, then will they have baby change stations?
That I don't know. Javier, do they come with that?
They do not, but we can always, we can always add.
Please, yeah. I agree. I've gone through that. Yeah. Nothing upsets my wife more than it's only in the women's, not in the males. Yeah, then I'll make the motion to approve subject to the inclusion of baby change stations for all bathrooms.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Thank you, Javier. Item seven, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to abandon and vacate 30-foot drainage easement being a 0.136 acre tract of land out of Lot 1, Cindero Estate subdivision located on the north side of Morris Road, approximately 735 feet west of Ed Carey Drive.
Mayor City Commission, good evening. This is a subdivision for a single-family home. I got recorded about a year ago, and it's on Morris Road. North side of Morris Road, 700 feet from South Ed Carey, just west of the Oak Village subdivision. It's a one-acre property. A drainage easement got recorded with the subdivision. The property owner did not realize that that drainage easement was included in there. The owner has been in communication with the city engineer, and the city engineer has no objections to removing this drainage easement. It's a single-family house in a one-acre property, so the runoff is negligible. So staff recommends approval, this is a photo of the property, and the approval from the engineering department. And staff recommends approval of the abandonment of the drainage easement.
Javier, that area is getting really developed. We just had, I think on our last meeting, we had a whole item on that. And right around that site, we have another, we have farmland, right? Which eventually, I imagine, is gonna become another subdivision?
Eventually, yes.
If that were to become a subdivision, and we give up this drainage easement, will we be losing anything? Or putting whoever develops that subdivision in?
No, because the subdivision that could potentially develop to the west of this property, the developer will have to figure out their own drainage system. And, you know, they cannot use other people's properties to solve their drainage, right? Has to, a drainage or city right-of-way or some other detention bond within their property.
Perfect. Well, I'll make the motion to approve.
Second. Okay, so I have a question. So we're taking out the easement.
Yes.
So, so the land can be further developed because that's no longer easement. They could build out into that.
Correct. The owner has more flexibility to use it, to use their property for the house or, you know, for other.
Okay, so there's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eight, consideration and possible action to approve funding for signage and authorize city manager to sign an agreement with Techstat to memorialize FM 1479 Rangerville Road as Bobby Morrow Memorial Highway as established by Texas Senate Bill 787.
Mayor, this is a, an agreement that Senator Lucio worked on for us. The project itself initially was expected to be about $5,000. It came in from Techstat at $6,157. So we're about $1,000 short, so we would have to come up with a difference. And staff is recommending that we approve the contract, and we'll just come up with the funding from our own funds.
And so Senator Eddy has been in contact with me on all this, and he's gathered checks from different municipalities and different bodies.
We have those already.
Yeah, and we've had them for quite a while now, a couple of months.
Right, the delay came from Techstat because we had to get an agreement from them. And they took about three months to get.
And so this would be, you know, let's just do it.
My only question is, I looked up Bobby Morrow, wasn't very familiar. Amazing guy, did a lot of great things. Is he from like off of Rangerville? I know he was born in Harlingen, from different sources. Said he died in Harlingen, but is he from the Rangerville area? Why Rangerville rather than Trejo's Drive or whatever? Just, that's my only question.
Because that's state road for one. And the other is, because the Senate built directly calls for that one, so I'm not really sure why they chose that.
Okay. That's just my only question. Doesn't have an existing name, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, and he was Olympics and everything. He was, he was good.
Hey, what's the name of the stadium in somebody told me?
Bobby Morrow. That's where he went to school.
All right, well, do a motion.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries. Item nine, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to award a task order to TECSE under the master service agreement awarded under RFQ number 2023-05 Professional Engineering Services for Street Lighting and Traffic Signal Projects to provide engineering services to design traffic signals at two intersections of West 54. Greg?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, Craig Cook, Assistant City Manager. You may recall the city commission approved the selection of TECSE, specifically TECSE Transportation, on January 4th of this year for two tasks. The first one being the design of the Dixieland Road Street Safety Lighting. That project is 95% designed. We're waiting on Techstat review comments. And this agenda item is for the second task, for the design of traffic signals at the two intersections that the mayor mentioned in the caption, which had been analyzed by Techstat and found to warrant traffic signals to replace the existing flashing yellow lights. We asked for a proposal. It was received on May 11th in the amount of $76,110 and included a rough order of magnitude construction estimate of $678,400, which makes it 11, the design fee 11.2% of the construction, of the estimated construction cost. Engineering will fund this design fee within their professional services account. And once it's designed and be shovel-ready, we will start looking, if not before, for a Techstat grant or some other grant through Anna's group to fund the construction.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Item 10, consideration and possible action to amend the HEB Tennis Center Fee Ordinance for Harlingen Military Veterans, and this was requested by Mayor Pro Tem Renny Betis and Commissioner Ford Kinsley. Do you have a motion to approve? Ford, do you want to elaborate?
I'll let Renny, ma'am. I.
Yes.
You had me at veterans, so what is it that you want, Commissioner?
No, I had a constituent of mine reach out. He's a veteran, and he was saying how he always goes places at the desk where him and some other, you know, military buddies go out and play. And even though, what was the fee right now? I know it's very small, the fee.
$1 and $2.
Yeah, I know it's very small, but he says that they go out on a regular basis. So they play a lot throughout the month. He says, I know it's only a dollar, but after a while, it adds up. And, you know, we're trying to stay healthy, and, you know, we're trying to just, you know, participate. And we noticed that he mentioned how some other cities have like some type of discount for veterans. And I, and I, once I heard that, I was just like, why don't we? Because like the mayor said, I'm very, anything to do with veterans, I'm down for. So I was hoping that we could maybe, you know, make it free for veterans to go participate at the, I mean, it's only a dollar. But I think that would be a good gesture on behalf of the city to show appreciation for the sacrifice a lot of our veterans made.
Why not consider it for all of our facilities?
I'm down for that, too.
Sounds good.
We do charge people for golfing, right? And then what, for the pools, penalty pools, right? Which I think is also a dollar, I think, right around there, right?
Dollar.
Javier's not too happy about it.
Well, I don't know.
He's like, take my money. But I don't know. I'm fine with this for right now, but if you'd like to bring something back, Javier, and Commissioner Betis and Commissioner Kinsley, if you guys want to make recommendations or whatever.
So not, the not, the nominal fee ones, I think, should be waived. I think that the golf course, maybe there's some conversation to have with those folks to see how it can be a reduced cost. I don't know off the top of my head what it is, but surely we can accommodate veterans in all our facilities. But the ones, I think that easy, low-hanging fruit would be the pool, right? And the tennis courts and those others. And we, maybe some kind of motion to allow Javier to figure that out?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, is that I'd make the motion to approve waiving the fee for the tennis courts and the pools and to allow Commissioner Betis and Commissioner Kinsley to work with Commissioner, pardon me, Javier Mendez to come back to us with a proposal for any other facilities the city has.
Any clue on how much revenue loss it would be?
I do not know, but it's gonna be sort of a headache trying to determine who's a veteran, who's not. They would have to bring their.
What?
Yeah, right, yeah. So I just don't know if anybody.
They can just walk in and say, hey, look at this cool tattoo.
That's what I was going to do.
Okay, in order to do that, we'd still have to amend the master fee ordinance. So we have to come back with a, with a, that amendment to actually do that. So.
And you can just put a policy in place, however you want them to identify them.
We can figure that out.
Just bring your DD 214.
Right.
Yeah, I'd recommend either like a milit, you know, actual military ID or a lot of veterans have the VA card, exactly, the VA card. Like I don't have mine, I carry mine everywhere. So you get discounts. So I take it, bring it everywhere. Yeah.
So then motion to bring this back with a proposal for all of the facilities.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. And I'm going to pray for unity more every time. All right. Item 11, consideration and possible action to approve a request for a school zone extension and speed limit change on Texas Department, Row, Wilson Road.
Make the motion to approve it.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Item 12, consideration and possible action to award RFQ 2023-14 Geotechnical and Construction Material Testing Services to qualified firms and authorize the city manager to enter into professional services contract with such firms as projects arise. Luis?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Luis Vargas and I'm the city engineer. In April of this year, the city issued a request for qualifications for firms licensed with the state of Texas to provide geotechnical services and construction materials testing for all federal, state, and locally funded public infrastructure projects for a contract period of three years. As stated in the RFQ, first must have experience in conducting soil testing, flex-based testing, asphalt testing, water table soil boring, concrete testing. We received a total of seven packages for, with qualifications. And we used the following criteria. We had, number one, professional qualifications of the team, experience and/or availability of the project engineer or project manager. An understanding of the project, familiarity with the applicable rules and regulations. And lastly, the proximity of the office and/or lab to the city's limits of Harlingen. To ensure that a testing firm is immediately available when projects arise, we recommend to negotiate contracts with the four highest-ranking companies. And those are, number one, Entertech PSI, number two, LNG Engineering, number three, MEG Engineers, and number four, EarthCo. Firms were with the highest score, these were the firms with the highest score according to their criteria. And we included a, a table with individual evaluator scores, score averages, and ranking. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Craig, you're getting soft on us.
I was more in the group, sir.
Yeah, I know. This time you were. Isaac Armitas is our newest Russian judge here.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Item 13, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution amending the City of Harlingen Resolution Number 1536 regarding the appointment of members to the Mayor Wellness Council. I put, I had this put on the agenda to ensure that we can have the folks at Healthy Harlingen Meeting. And so we've gone through these with the city secretary's office and with the folks that are still on the Healthy Harlingen Board. And I've made some appointments, but those cannot be confirmed until I ensure that, that I am able to make those appointments. And so even though this is the Mayor Wellness Council, there are appointments that are given to each of the commissioners as, as well. So I made some appointments, changing this resolution to have me appoint five and each of you appoint one will allow the people that are already attending the meetings to be able to continue attending and having a quorum and moving forward with business. And so I believe there's only two folks that would need to make appointments. We, there's one for Ford, but where are the other two, Amanda? Do you remember?
I think it's one for Commissioner.
Mayor, if I could just say.
We have one each.
Oh, one each.
Yes, but you, you have yours and I, yours is, is June.
The, the resolution that was sent in your package is not correct. It's been changed. And so the, what the mayor's talking about, she gets five appointees and each of you get one. So that's going to be the resolution that, that change to that that's going to be made.
So we're going to get rid of the wellness board?
No, they're still.
No, no.
And so are we keeping the mayor's wellness board and the health board?
It's a little confusing. So they have, there's a mayor, it is, it's the mayor's wellness council, but they do business as Healthy Harlingen. But then they have a mayor wellness council that is same name, but they're the ones that handle the funds. And those are intact. Those are the ones that were created before, I think, well, Mike may have been here. And so I believe Jean McCullough is on, on there. Moises and maybe one other, one other person that still remains. And they're the ones that control the writing of checks and things like that. This is the executive board that need to discuss what their plans are, what we're doing for the community, those kinds of things. And so the way that it was written initially was a little odd. It was that the folks that were appointed way back when would select members and then present them to us and then we could confirm. But what commissioners were, and the mayor, and myself, and those of you here, were already making those appointments. And that's not the way that it was really written. So this clarifies that. Initially, I was going to have myself appoint everyone. It's Mayor Wellness Council. But there were some appointments already there made by commissioners and I want to make sure that those stay there. And then those that don't, haven't had an appointment can, can choose to, to appoint someone. And if you need help, I can, I can help you with, with that. But I believe it's just Mike that has an empty spot if we were to adopt this resolution.
We have a situation with the museum where we appoint the museum board. And there's a separate committee that is appointed on their own and they.
The animal shelter, like the animal shelter.
Yes.
That's there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Question is, do we need both boards?
No, we only have one board. The other board is, is they, they handle the nonprofit, the nonprofit. Like that's, we don't appoint those boards. We can, we can talk about that at another time and, and maybe that needs, I haven't gotten that far enough to talk to Mark about if we can make some changes to that because I don't know how that part works.
Well, we do need that board because they help us with the marathon. Whenever we have the vet, right, that charges the fees, it goes to them and then they cut us a check.
But those people don't want to be part of that board, the executive board.
That's, that's a different board that you don't appoint any people to.
So what all you're doing is changing the selection process?
Yes, that, the, the, when they created the, kind of like, I want to say maybe it's the same as. Keep Harlingen Beautiful, where they have a, a board that, that handles the money, right? And then they have a board.
Well, we had a paid executive director.
That's.
Handle.
Right. And, and so that's something that once this board can meet, I know that they've discussed having that. And there you go, Javier is here. He can talk, we, we talked about that at one of our meetings and maybe that is something that we can do through the Legacy Foundation. We, we have plans for that. So there are, if we can make it one, that would be great. But I don't know that, that we can. Mark would have to be answering those questions. Do you have some?
Well, I was just going to mention the, the board that you're talking about is, which is Jean McCullough. So they're, they're the physical agent of the mayor's wellness council. So whenever the funds, because they're the 501(c)(3) arm of the board. And so whenever we get funding from whoever, it goes through them. So they're, they're the physical agent. So that's the Harlingen Wellness Coalition.
Coalition, honestly.
Yes.
So, so that's required for them to function and their, and to submit their grant application and all of that. And, and Jean McCullough has been willing to, to stay on. I've, I've talked to him about making, you know, helping in, in that regard because they can continue to be funded. But I know, who, who else is on, on the coalition?
So it's Jean, it's June, it was Meg Jorn. And there's, there's somebody else that's on there. There's four, there's four members.
So June is, is, is on, he's your pick commissioner. And he, I didn't, I didn't realize that. Oh, no, I did realize that because I spoke with him about it. So he is on our board, but Jean McCullough that does help us tremendously, I think right now, is not part of the executive board. And I would like for him to remain helping as, as, because we need that, especially to go into these neck, this next cycle for, for funding. But we can, we can look at that with Mark and see how we can make it better. But this is just for the appointments of this, of this board. So, did you have any other questions?
So we're making sure that the mayor's, this mayor's thing is the same thing as Healthy Harlingen.
It is. I don't know.
It is the same.
It's the same.
It's just a DBA.
It's, it's, it's a DBA without being a DBA. They just call themselves Healthy Harlingen. Yeah. There is not two boards.
Yeah.
And Commissioner, I think it all started because they wanted to brand this, this group. And so that's where they came up with Healthy Harlingen. And they have the double H, right, the healthy. And so that's where it came.
And it's everywhere. So we're not going to get rid of that.
Yeah. So it's really not a separate board. It's, it's the executive board, but that's what they call them, Healthy Harlingen.
And right now, we all get two picks. So we would lose a pick, you gain a pick.
Right.
Can I get one of your odd picks?
No. Well, you're, we can talk later for that.
You have to amend the ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I was initially going to have none and have them all mine, but I thought about that a little bit more. And I do think it's, it's, it would be nice to have the commission represented in it as well. And I encourage everybody on this commission to attend the Healthy Harlingen meetings and to participate because Javier could use some help. Because right now Javier and Moises are the ones that are doing all of the work. So if any commissioners here want to help, that would be appreciated.
Mayor, did you want to add any extra?
Go ahead.
Right now Javier serves on the board. And so we would need to amend the ordinance to actually allow you to add a sixth member, to, actually two staff people to help the board. And they would actually serve on the board as well, so.
Right. What I wanted to do, Mark, is just to have the director of Parks and Rec, which would be Javier Mendez, and Christina is your.
She's our recreation supervisor.
Right. For those two, I mean, they don't have to be named Javier Mendez, but those two positions to, to be on the board. Right now, it's an appointment for Commissioner Morales, but I think it'd be better that he appoint a citizen and then they are just on the, because that, they have been, even though it's not written in the, in the way, in the bylaws now, but you're already serving on the board. So we can keep things the way they are.
So the total number would be 10?
Initially, it was up to 13, right? I think it was 10 to 13. So this will be 10 appointments and two city employees.
But will they be voting or non-voting? Why does it really matter? Wouldn't you want to keep it like an odd number so you can vote?
I mean, they don't argue. It's, it's a, I mean, we can.
So how about one each? And you get four?
Well, I'm, I'm on the board. I'm an officer of the board. So I'm a secretary.
Yes.
Christina is, she helps because of our programs that we got, right? Through Salud 50 and our recreation programs, right? And so she's not a voting member. But, so it could be 11.
Okay. So they can be non-voting members.
We could make Christine an ex-official member and then have Javier as a full member. That would be 11 members.
I think there's a lot of questions on this and I would like to see the amended, if, we need to get the amended ordinance so everyone can be on the same page on this.
Okay, so this is the Mayor Wellness Council. It's not that difficult. I'd like for them to be able to meet. And so whatever questions that we have, I'm sure that we can get them or conditioned upon whatever changes. So you don't have specific changes that you want. Because we've been trying to do this for several months. And no one has, from as far as I know, none of these commissioners, none of the commissioners have gone to any of the meetings and participated. And they're working really hard and they need to be able to meet and to move forward and to take care of business. And they haven't been able to because we don't have a, a full board. So at this point, we've made appointments, but those appointments are not, they're not able to confirm them. They are not able to go in and sign. So if we delay, this is another two weeks. And this is just a, you know, this is something that is for the community and I would hate for it to be further delayed. I would oppose, I would urge this commission to approve amongst however changes or amendments that you want Mark to do because I'm sure that he can get it done. So is there a motion for that?
You're asking for a motion from Mark?
From Mark to.
To configure all of this, make it all legal and.
Correct.
Okay, I'll make a motion as to such.
Second.
You have a job.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 13, consider, oh, so that's mine. All right. Now, item 14 is board appointments, appointments. We'll start with Commissioner Kinsley.
Uh, no, ma'am.
None.
I do have one. Second. Connie, Connie Cari Salas to the Museum Advisory Board. And she's here today. I just want to introduce everybody to Connie Cari Salas. And she will be joining the Museum Advisory Board. She's super excited about the opportunity, retired, newly retired. And they're very excited to work with Commissioner Betis's appointment. So the museum board can, can, can start to, to meet now. And I think, Commissioner, you already have an appointment, right? But.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Mine was just here, just up.
Yes. Okay, so then we need the rest of the commission to.
I'll get you, I'll get you.
All right, great. Okay. Any appointments?
No.
No. All those in favor say, or do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. All right. Item 15, executive closed session on the following items. A, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071 regarding proposed ambulance contract with South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. B, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0712 to receive privileged attorney-client communication regarding contractual rights and obligations. Item C, consultation with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0712 to receive a privileged attorney-client communication regarding contractual rights and obligations and regarding reasonably anticipated litigation pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. And consultation, item D, with legal counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.074 regarding personnel matters relating employment of Development Corporation of Harlingen. Incorporated, the manager and CEO of the Harlingen Economic Development Corporation. The time is now 6:38. Do we have a motion to executive session? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to executive session and we hope to be out shortly. Thank you for your patience. Back. Out of executive session. We do have some action items. Here, one second. Okay, and so we have item 16, discussion and possible action to approve a contract for ambulance services with South Texas Emergency Care Foundation. And earlier Commissioner Kinsley did abstain from, from this agenda item. And so I'd ask, do we have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the contract as discussed in the executive session.
A second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Pose.
Opposed.
Motion carries. And we also have item 17, heart, consideration and possible action to approve item 15, employment of the Development Corporation of the Harlingen EDC Manager/CEO Position. Do we, Commissioner, do you have a motion on that?
Yeah, motion to approve the appointment contract for the Development Corporation of Harlingen Manager/CEO Position with amendments proposed in executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. And that is it. We are adjourned. Thank you so much.